Well, Jeannie's just giving you some information too. Something coming up there now. Come on. Middle part of the list. No, that's, I think we're too late for that. I got lucky.
I mean, I'm with this agent, you get mine? No. Which the kids will do.
Does that look at the name?
Yeah, where can you get that from? Just from getting run down or? Well, you get run down, but they knew that's a lot, but I'll let you in. Both my boys had it when they were sports. And you know, we think they can stay out until all hours and don't have to eat, but they have hours between 5:30.
I'm surprised we don't have that one.
All right.
Younger married couple.
Called me in order. Scan for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, start our parole call.
Okay. Steve Herron.
Here.
Carol Hunkam.
Here.
Jay Jones.
Here.
Lexi Murphy.
Here.
Jean Anro.
Here.
All present, so we have a call. First time on the agenda really is to approve the agenda for tonight. See, it does one of the back gauge reports. It's obviously contained in the first page. Any directions, additions, deletions? Do we have anything we need to delete? Anyone?
Nope.
Change? Call for a motion if so approved, or if so inclined.
Make the motion to approve the agenda for October 17th.
I'll second. Thank you to Jean. The motion by Jean is seconded by Carol to approve the agenda for tonight. Any discussion or questions? So call for a vote. All in favor of approving the agenda for the October 17th regular meetings, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carried. Number five, motion to approve the change to the employee handbook regarding payday to Wednesday, utilizing the electronic deposit and requiring any new employees to use ACH payroll. Did you type that one up on that one?
Yeah. Yeah, it should be in there.
Let me see. I don't know.
It's just a motion, isn't it?
Yes. It's just the same as you want to refer to the payroll page, whatever it is. I had it on that.
Nope, I did not. I thought I had it in there.
It's item 12.4 payday. It says that the one sentence is the third sentence is payday shall be on the first Monday following each two week pay period. So that would adjust to Wednesday. And then we would add the line about new employees required to utilize direct deposit or ACH, whatever.
But don't they still bring their cards and everything on Monday?
On Monday morning.
Right. So that stays there, but it's just the actual.
Yep, the first sentence is still good about the time commitment is payday on Monday.
So you guys got all those glitches cleaned up?
Yep.
Okay, sounds good.
I'll make a motion to approve it then.
I'll second.
Motion by Carol, seconded by Jean, to approve the change to the employee handbook regarding ACH electronic deposit for payroll. Any other questions to ask or discussion? There was a call for a vote. All in favor of changing the employee handbook. It is currently page 17 to reflect the payday change to Wednesday and for the direct deposit and to allow, require new employees to use ACH payroll. Say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carried. Six and seven, as you see there, are the two Class E liquor licenses. First one, we need one for J and D, and the second one is for JW's.
Had no problems with them in the past, I'm assuming.
Do they always send something to that says there is no problems? Do you get anything, Scott?
There's a website to get on to.
Oh, but you don't get an actual.
No.
Okay. Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve J and D and approve JW's.
Let's do it separate just for now.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve JW's.
All right, Lexi, motion. We have support. Second for J and D.
I'll second.
Jean is seconded. Any other discussion? Or item six, motion to approve the Class E liquor license for the J and D tavern. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carried. Now, if you'd like to make your other motion, Lexi, for the.
I'll make the motion to approve JW's.
I'll second that.
All right, I'm going, motion by Lexi, seconded by Carol, to approve the Class E liquor license for new for JW's, Jason Lohr. Any other discussion or questions? Calling for a vote. All in favor of approving Class E liquor license for Jason Lohr, JW, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carried. Number eight is the motion to accept the October 3rd, 2022 resignation of Janine Altman from her two-year term appointment as city treasurer.
So now what? That's the plan, we have to, obviously, get a new one?
Yes. Go after a point, so, yes.
We can just make a motion, we don't need a resolution to make of this?
Not to accept her resignation.
What?
Not to accept her resignation.
Oh, okay. I'll make a motion to accept her resignation from her two-year appointment. I'll second.
Motion by Carol and a second by Jean, to accept the October 3rd, 2022 resignation of Janine Altman from her two-year term appointment as city treasurer.
Do we have anybody in mind? Or however you know who's going to be giving the treasurer's report now?
Did you want to? What did you say? I said, do you want to?
I don't know.
We do not.
I did print the treasurer's thing off. I don't know if anybody's got it, but I did print it. It's pretty general.
Will you vote on this first, or?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, to continue that, a call for a vote. All in favor of accepting the resignation, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carried.
Where did you find it?
Do you want to read it, Carol?
In the ordinances.
Ordinances?
Yep.
What's the ordinance number?
Chapter four.
Chapter four?
Yep. You can look at it. It just says, Chapter 4, Article 11, Appointment, the treasurer shall be appointed by the council for a term of two years. And then it kind of describes it after that.
Can like, I don't know, can like a bank do it, or no?
Well, from what we talked to Carol at Premgar, she said they do it in-house. That's what she told me. And that was way before we ever heard that Jeannie was even going to resign.
Okay.
But that was what they did. Because I asked her who they had. And she said, I think she does it. And then the mayor comes in and checks it all over. He signs it. I don't know if she signs it too.
I think it's, I think it's just a two of them.
Okay. I think she's like, where are the ordinance?
She what?
They don't have the ordinance though.
Oh, they don't have one at all?
But we do.
That's what, we'd have to change our ordinance accordingly.
Yep.
We couldn't just do that. We'd have to make sure.
That would make sense.
We'd have to change our ordinance if we were going to do that.
If we do it within house.
In-house. Yeah.
Okay. And I don't know if that's a possibility, or if we want to, you know, I know we have to get our last couple months going to be approved. So.
Jeannie, can I ask you a question about the treasurer? Can, do you know how to give a treasurer's report, or no?
The treasurer's report?
Yes.
Yes, I know how.
She's been doing, I mean, you've been helping with all of them since.
And then you just, and then you just gave it to Janine, or no?
Janine's the lady that comes in. Okay, yes.
Okay. I know you don't know anything, but you know.
Right. And that's when you guys recheck, May and June make those come out. Now, I don't know, have you gotten through July and August at all, or no?
I have July balanced. August is.
Penny?
Close.
Okay. Sounds good.
Carol, when we talked, you said June was still out balanced. Were you able to find that one?
Yes.
Okay, well, we'll have to move forward on that somehow.
Yep.
Should we put like an add-up? Or should we put something like on the website? Or what are we doing?
Well, I don't know. I think we should be able to.
Find somebody?
Give that. Another person that sounds would, I think, maybe if you would consider, was that Marla Unchar. I think he'd be. He's a CPA.
I've stopped down there a couple times, but I can't catch him.
Catch him home?
Right. He's always out and about.
Yeah, but I think he would be a good one if we wanted to continue outside.
Yeah.
I don't know, like I said, if he'd just be interested or not, but.
Interestingly, our ordinance talks about the clerk being the chief accounting officer, and one of the tasks is to reconcile the bank statements with the clerk's books, which is exactly what the treasurer also says. Hope that's a separate. So there's some overlap there.
Well, I guess how Sandy and Jeannie did it too.
We'll go into that, see what we did.
But it might be.
Okay. Any other discussion on that for now? Item number nine, resolution to accept the Iowa DOT's detour route for the replacement of Highway 10 Bridge over Mud Creek, west of Polina's impact South Maple Street within the city limits. Thanks to Steve's eagle eye, the DOT had to revise their whole document and fix things.
Where they're actually going.
When I, when I called her, Steve, she never, she never caught it. She said, nobody in Orem County caught it either.
Really?
So she said, tell your councilman, nice job for reading the fine prints.
Good to know, thank you.
That's funny.
Especially that none of the other ones in the whole area caught it.
You're the man.
Yeah, so she got, yeah, so she got back in there, and probably within 10 minutes, she had it, had it reworded, so.
Right. So unless you see any other changes, Steve.
Yeah, so we don't do this resolution for the heck of it. And March 23rd, or March 1st, they're going to start, huh? Yeah, it's a long time. March to November.
Hopefully, it doesn't take that long.
Yeah, I suppose it depends on the weather and everything.
So if we can have a motion following the resolution reading on, in your packet.
I'll move to present the resolution.
Can you read it like the official one, a couple pages back there? There's another one, Steve. That's just, just spelled out, once you can read it out.
Oh, I didn't see that part.
Yeah, okay.
I'll present the resolution to approve an Iowa DOT requested detour through Palina on Maple Street for the replacement of a bridge 2.9 miles west of Palina, Highway 10 over Mud Creek. Be resolved by the council and the city of Palina, approve the detour through Palina for a bridge replacement from 3/1/23 to 11/3/23.
I'll second. Motion brought forward by Steve and seconded by Lexi, is that correct?
Oh.
Okay. All right, we need a roll call vote. We're ready. Unless there's any further discussion, clarifications, or edits to the DOT's approval.
And then you just put the numbers for the resolution, unless it's.
Yeah. In order.
Okay.
Okay, Steve Herron.
Aye.
Carol Hunkam.
Aye.
Jay Jones.
Yes.
Lexi Murphy.
Yes.
And Jean Anro.
Yes.
All ayes, resolution approved, passed and approved in the 17th day of October 2022. Thank you. All right. The next item is number 10, resolution to close section of downtown streets for a few hours the afternoon of Saturday, October 29th, 2022, for the Chambers Trump Retreat and Fall Festival. I believe this is also in the next resolution written out in your packet. Just need someone to read that first part when they make their motion. Any other questions?
I'll make the resolution to close the streets and the business stickers for Palina's Fall Festival. Be it resolved by the city of Palina, Iowa, to approve closing for a few hours in the afternoon for the Palina Fall Festival, being held on 10/29/22. South Main at the city office to the four-way stop of Main and Broadway, East and Broadway to Maple Street.
Thank you, Lexi. Does anyone want to support that? The second.
I'll second.
The second by Jean. Motion by Lexi, the second by Jean. Any other discussion on this resolution?
And this is maybe minor, but the few hours, did they, what part of the day, or?
It's afternoon. Yeah, it says afternoon. It's like 4:00, they start the Trump Retreat, I think, so it's probably like 3:00 to 6:00. It's usually done by 7:00 when it starts, starting at 3:00 to 7:00. I didn't want to, didn't know if they, they didn't give us me on exact hours, so I'm just writing a few hours, but.
Case it goes longer or shorter?
It's kind of.
I don't know, but shorter probably doesn't make any difference, longer probably.
Any other questions or discussion? Or we can roll call vote. We're ready?
Steve?
Aye.
Carol?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Lexi?
Yes.
And Jean?
Yes.
All ayes, motion carried. And then it's passed and approved in the 17th day of October 2022. Next one is item 11 on your agenda, resolution to approve citywide trick-or-treating Monday, October 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. That is also the next page in your packet.
Are we already going to do that?
I don't know. We're going to make rules, so we got to enforce them for all things.
Okay.
That's why we got it.
I'll, I'm going to make a motion to, resolution to allow trick-or-treating in Palina from 6:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m. on 10/31/22, to be resolved by the city of.
10/31.
Oh, 10/31/22, sorry. Be resolved by the council of the city of Palina, Iowa, to a citywide trick-or-treat on 10/31/22 from 6:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m.
That's the right date, Carol, you can.
No, what day is it?
Monday.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. It's a Monday. Which day to be ready. Be ready on Monday. All right, Lexi presented the resolution, trick-or-treat. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
We have the motion by Lexi and a second by Carol. And we'll now call for a roll call vote.
All right, Steve Herron.
I'll say yes this time.
Yeah, okay. Carol?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Lexi?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
All yeses, also a resolution approved. Passed and approved in the 17th day of October 2022.
I know, but what happens if I bring my kids, do I get one?
Probably haven't you talked about this. Number 12 is the motion to approve the purchase of a cut quick saw from Aggravision for 1,600 change, to allow, enable efficient pavement and sidewalk cutting.
It doesn't have to be this deal from Aggravision. They can look around a little bit too, but our partner saw is seen as better days. I know it was, we've had it since I started, and I think it's been here.
More of yours.
Five, six years before that. It's throttle sticks, there's.
Grease.
Part of the, where the pole cord is, that's all broke on that. We got to re-tighten that every time we use it.
So why do you have to use a cut quick? Like, you can use like a steel?
That's, that's just a general term.
Oh, it's a name of a brand or something?
It's a steel, it's the brand. It's the branding.
Can you put a couple in? Nope.
I don't know my chain code.
Me neither.
It's the, it's all we use to cut the concrete, and we use it to cut water lines and.
Don't they want to trade you?
It's used, when they do water main repairs, you cut through that pipe, and they cut plastic, and they cut metal with it, and the concrete sidewalks with that.
Oh.
It cuts the street.
Well, you could do more of that too. But the streets have been doing a few.
Yep.
Are you able to get rid of the other one? I mean, those things that you sell in your junk, or whatever you do?
No.
It is, yeah, that.
If anything, if we're, if we're down in a hole.
In desperate need.
We might use that one instead of using a good one, and get that one wet and full of mud and whatnot.
Yep.
Just make sure it's safe.
Right? Yeah, we're going to take it apart.
All guards are in.
All guards are on, just, yeah, we're going to take it apart this winter too, and see what we can do with it.
I'll make the motion to approve the quick, cut quick saw.
Okay, we have a motion from Lexi.
I'll second.
Second from Jay, to approve the purchase of a cut quick saw from Aggravision for 1,600.
This will probably come out of the locker.
I mean, it could probably come out of, about, split it over the end one.
Yeah.
Like a super electric, water.
Sure. For everything.
Okay. All right, we have motion and a second. So any other discussion? Hearing none, I would call for a vote. All in favor of the motion to approve the purchase of a cut quick saw from Aggravision for 1,600.
This will probably come out of the locker.
I mean, it could probably come out of, about, split it over the end one.
Yeah.
Like a sewer electric, water.
Sure. For everything.
Okay. All right, we have motion and a second. So any other discussion? Hearing none, I would call for a vote. All in favor of the motion to approve the purchase of a cut quick saw from Aggravision for 1,600, $16.01, to enable efficient pavement and sidewalk cutting, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. It's all ayes, motion carried. It's all aye, Kelly. All right, 13 is the motion to revert authority to grant building permits back to the administrator clerk.
Where were they?
Oh, Jay.
Oh, gosh, I don't.
How could we table that last time?
Because I thought you needed a resolution.
After that.
This is just.
We didn't resolution it.
I think this is part of it.
And technically, it says that whenever, you know, you don't have a clerk, the tasks, you can assign the task to some other people. So now you have a clerk, it's more of a legality or whatever.
Just reverse that.
You don't even have to put it, say it, but we're going to just close that loop.
Sure.
So we will now officially, you can hand those rules back to him.
I have a question.
Yes.
Jay and I did not vote on the original.
That's right.
So do you want us not to vote now?
You were on it, because you have a conflict essentially, or you're participating.
Yeah.
Well, but we're giving up our.
Yeah, so I think that you were against it.
We can vote.
I would think so.
All right.
And you're no longer going to do it.
Okay. Unless you want to keep it, you're fighting it for.
It depends what your other council members do, if it will actually impact or not. All right, so we just need a motion to revert authority to grant building permits back to administrator clerk.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Jean. Do you need a second? Do you need a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jay. All right, any other questions or discussion for that? Call all in favor of motion, all in favor of reverting authority back to the administrator clerk to grant building permits, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. It's all ayes, motion carried. Thank you. And 14 is a similar way, that was motion revert custodian of records, roll back to administrator clerk, which is essentially already been in effect, but.
You don't have that.
I have that, I believe.
From that end.
So we just need to undo that officially, formally.
I'll make the motion to revert the records back to the administrator clerk.
All right, motion.
I'll second.
Carol, second by Jay. To revert custodian records, roll back to the administrator clerk. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of reverting custodian records, roll back to the administrator clerk, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carried. Thank you. All right, if anyone was here for an open address of the council, we can entertain them now. Assuming that's not the case, so we can roll into reports. Um, do you think we need to do something on yours? Scott, you ready?
I don't have anything.
You ready? Okay. I have you right away.
I don't know.
And this list is separate on your table there for utilities.
We pothole utilities, dug and filled the grave, got the sewer jet for South Rutledge, did 24-hour notices. We had a branch go down at the park last weekend.
I have.
Two weekends ago. Me and Rich cleaned that up, and we held it away Monday. Grated around the pad at the reservoir where the overflow pipe is and fixed that up. Board, board pipe for electric at 100 block East Broadway in South Maple. Board electric pipe at Scott Luscher's, and board electric at Miles Foreman. We placed the curb stop at 317 North Rutledge. Cleaned up the alley at 100 block East Broadway, South Maple. We fixed some switches at the shop. We picked up the plow from Sandborne. Picked up for sale science from Sead's mom. Fixed the electrical junction box at the reservoir. Instilled a pedestal in alley, 100 block East Broadway, South Maple. We filled in potholes. Plowed electric at the football field. Safety train, we had bucket truck rescue, pull-top rescue, confined space training. Hydro-activated trench at football field. Cleaned mud bag, drunk pickup, which went pretty good.
It wasn't as, you know, a lot of it looked, I don't know.
It wasn't too bad. We were, we were pretty much done by 2, I don't know, 1:00, 2:00 o'clock or something. Aside from hauling TVs to Hospers.
And you guys, like, possibly does that, where you.
TVs?
Yeah.
We still have the backup pickup and...
Who takes them there?
Landfill.
Oh, you just have to haul them.
Oh, you just had to go as far as Hospers with them?
Oh, you mean Hospers for the landfill, okay, I always called it Sheldon, that's why. For many years.
Plowed conduit in on North Clark. Dug up curb stop on Main. Fixed mud bag, we had to get the part from Marcus, or from Vermeer Marcus. Dig hole in the street in front of post office. We tried to pull that lead line out and it would not budge, so we ended up having TCA come and bore the new water line in. We had an emergency call on Friday night for electric hanging over the road. Got that fixed and in the wind on Saturday, there was a power line up for, somebody's bed sheet up in the power lines, we had to get off.
Should they head out on a closed line too or?
I assume so.
What? Took care of that, oh yeah.
We got meter reading done today. So, I'd just get a rough estimate. In order for, uh, street lights for downtown, new poles and lights and whatnot.
You got that back?
It'd be about thirty-five hundred dollars per pole.
Whoa, and how many poles?
I mean, it depends if you wanna go all the way down the boulevards and down...
Well, we could not get as many as we have now because there are, there you would be bright, correct?
We could, yeah, we, I mean, we could probably go less.
Want to figure, go by, see what they say, the coverage is.
Is there, is there a way we could put some poles or some lights down like streets that have no light? Who does that, like, we do? Do you don't want to turn the streets entire amount?
Yeah.
It's a little scary when you're walking.
Some streets are pretty dark.
I know!
They are. You go out late.
Or early in the mornings.
And I don't have to worry about that.
But...
Thirty-five hundred dollars per pole, huh?
Well, it'd be like per, your pole or your light.
And everything.
And so, if you want, if you want new wire and everything, you said you could pretty much figure doubling. Repricing.
With, definitely with what? With wiring?
Pay your labor and put the wire in and...
So, look at a grant.
Like they go grant sometime, somehow, maybe you know?
Maybe, maybe you need to tell us how many poles you think. Yeah, I think we should do that.
Well, then, you want the same style light, I mean, like for the...
No, I think, I think that on the four corners, there should be something different.
Yep, I think he needs to get us some pictures.
Yeah.
I have a catalog you guys can look at.
Oh, I will look at it then.
The poles are looking at, they have slots in them and you can put anything you want to. You put flag holders, you can put things for banners, you can hang flower pots, you can hang...
Only four flower pots, all we're doing.
Wait till the committee decides. I've heard some ladies want to do a committee.
Oh, boy!
Wanna do what?
Have a committee, they wanna keep Polina beautiful.
I'm sure, I'm surprised, I'm sure, I'm surprised you haven't gotten any comments like this before.
Are they gonna go around water too then, or?
They didn't say that. Now, come on, they're just older ladies.
I know, but still.
Well, I think we wanna keep Polina looking nice, I don't, I'm not against that.
I'm not saying we can, we, I want that too, but I'm saying there's different ways we can do that, we don't need flowers, flowers die.
Well, let's just kind of wait and see. I think we gotta have some, uh, little people can help, some ideas, we have to be open to that.
Trees need to come down too.
So...
She's a tree Nazi, yeah.
Well, that might happen.
I'm just saying, if somebody tripped, we're gonna get, we're gonna get, or like, some of them are tearing up the...
Well, it's been for twenty years and we just hang in there.
Someone's been tripped.
We know, knows how long ago, and she still likes us.
That's good.
Or whoever did it way back then.
Yeah.
Well, I think you should have some pictures or something maybe that you could find, we also need to see about getting a grant of some sort, cause you won't be doing them anymore this fall.
No, I talked to that guy too, if he wants, if you guys wanted him to come and talk to us, he will.
Okay.
We should do something fairly soon, cause they're getting weakened.
Yeah, they're getting bad.
Maybe what happens if another carbon's in there or something, no, no.
No, we don't need that.
I mean, maybe it's something we could just start, you know, on the four corners and just slowly start working out too, you know, maybe we don't have to do it all at once.
So, right, well, either that or you check the ones that you know are bad that probably have to be, but I don't know if you wanna go in between either. If you see a bad pole or what you feel.
I think, I think you need to give us a number on how many you think.
Yeah, what you feel really needs to be done.
Thirty-six, I believe downtown right now.
That's way too many.
Just in the downtown area?
I would think though, the new ones will have a lot better, brighter expanse.
Then maybe we can use the old ones to go down the old, the street to like...
That have nothing.
That have nothing, save somebody that way.
Or say, at least for a while.
For a while.
Yep, I think you should get that one.
I was, that O'Brien County, gave out all the brands and I didn't see her name on the handicap. Did we not put in for Elaine or did they?
Oh, for the, that, this, that, no.
O'Brien County?
O'Brien County one? I don't think so, I think maybe fire department maybe did.
Fire department did.
Okay, I thought, but he usually does every...
Pretty sure they got money for three, uh...
Three suits.
Three suits, yeah.
That's right, they did get for clothing.
Ten thousand now, isn't it?
But, no, we gotta remember that, I think it's what, is it by the fifteenth of April or something like that? This is gonna be a big one.
Put in for that, something for that, maybe they'll give us some money for that.
Right, doesn't hurt to ask.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
Nope.
Yeah, my, my, it could be a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars with just a pole, so...
I think when you have, if you put LEDs in there, I guarantee you, you're gonna...
Yeah.
We also, we also have the lights on the buildings too, that lights are up too lately.
Yeah, right, true.
Which one are we gonna do now?
I think it'd be, I don't...
Which, when are we gonna do that?
I always thought it'd be soon.
Before this, great thing.
I don't know if we're gonna make it, we have, we have three electric projects that are not done yet.
From two to six, have half the lights downtown turned off.
So, two and a half.
Yeah.
We used to turn...
We turn them off, well, we're trying to get a timer set, but the timer that somebody, that thing that ordered, wasn't it correct?
We, we have a timer on half the lights downtown and they used to turn off at, from like two to six.
They used to, they don't have?
They can again. When we put in all the LED lights, if you just let them go all night, but we can put it back if you want.
You know, they didn't have a cost factor, so... Can we get anything with the utility? Well, I don't get the word utility, but with the utility, cause I know I used to put in shop lights, you know, they always gave rebates on, you can put LEDs in.
Energy efficiency.
Energy efficient, yeah.
But I don't think the city paid for the lights, I think it's, I don't think it's paid for the lights.
No, I used to, I mean, street lights.
Oh, okay, we're talking about...
I don't care about those lights.
I can talk to the city government, see what they say.
That's what I wonder, if they would do something too.
Yeah, a lot of those companies do that, if you put in LEDs, they give you a rebate.
I wonder.
Cause I put those big shop lights in, we got a hundred dollars, I think, in shop lights for doing it.
Yeah, I guess it wouldn't hurt to ask them what they can do, if they got some thoughts for you. How did the cleanup go, Kelly?
Good.
Did it?
Yep.
Good turnout as far as, um, stuff was okay? What, the dump out?
There was a couple that were twice moved, but it wasn't, it wasn't terrible.
Okay.
I, I know we can't do anything about it, but I had somebody Saturday night come to my place and dig through stuff and they took the container and what they didn't want, they threw it into my yard. I, so I had Sunday morning, I had to go clean up the crap, but I don't know what we can do about it, but...
Not a whole lot.
Not a whole lot.
To be nice, containers out.
Yeah, this whole thing, I thought it was being good using a container, you know, instead of a happy box, you know, or container and here it come out and half the shit's on the ground, you know?
Well, I had somebody that came by, cause I had one of these things you can do massage for your feet, and they took the cord.
Yeah. Somebody, somebody came and cut the cord off some of my stuff too.
Really? Well, and then I had two chairs that were bad and two kids, three kids on bikes.
Oh, boy.
Each took a chair and down the road they go, only thing, the one didn't have a caster, so he's stopping and going and stopping, so I went outside, I said, if you don't wanna keep this, don't just drop it somewhere, bring it back. It's like, see somebody having it by their house and they're not gonna pick it up, cause they probably weren't on the list. But they were having fun.
What's funny was, it wasn't till after it got dark that those people came around.
Oh.
Cause my son was sitting in the, oh wow, there's people out there.
Yeah.
I don't think it's... But then you go out there Saturday morning, shit's all over.
Nope, I lost my chairs on Sunday night.
Yeah.
There they went. Hadn't known that, I'd put them out a long time ago.
DGR, start on the engineering of the, uh, switchgear.
Good. Do we have to sign some kind of resolution?
I think he's gonna give it something, we're gonna know for us.
Paul's second.
Good, how long did you think that would go?
He didn't say. That's all I have, I think.
Thanks, Kelly.
Orders in replacement phones, uh, Friday or Saturday, and apparently it didn't end, cause I'm not sure, mine worked yesterday and today it's not working, so I'm not sure if I'm gonna get work in here or not. Their minus five, your little, I think it was four. Like it's a wish call.
Are they like Samsungs or are they iPhones?
They're Apple's.
Trent, you had a good morning this morning. Abby Hansen locked her car and her dog locked her car twice in less than an hour, so she had to call Trent twice.
Twenty minutes, I called it again.
Tell her to take the dog out.
So, let's try not to do that again.
She took my vehicle because it happened right across the street from her.
Oh, my gosh. At least it was a fun one, kinda.
It wasn't bad, well, it took me like a minute each time to get into cars.
Typical Monday, right?
Yeah.
It already was wished a couple times, I think she said she's had the problem in the past, so...
I will send you an easy wedge, I'll just give it.
Tell her to put a key somewhere.
Can't she wish the dog had unlocked?
She doesn't have a spare key.
Maybe they should, that's what they need to get, get a key made somehow, somewhere, those fob's are not real cheap either, if that's what it is.
I guess I haven't paid attention lately, for quite a while, they still had a door lock that you could make.
Oh, really?
Plain key.
Okay, so I used to have on like her, vehicles like hers, and we do, but it's on the key fob and you have to take it off to get in your key.
Still are able to make them.
You would still make a key.
You'd still make a key.
So, she could take that key and get it made and have it hung at home.
It just doesn't have to have the chip starting and that.
Right.
Yeah, she could wear it around her neck.
I, I did that for my son at college and he had to use that key and it sets off the alarm.
Key to get in your car.
And he's like, everybody looks before me. Well, I don't care, it's only ten dollars, it's not fifty dollars, you're a little lost in key.
Dave wants to know what that old car, yours, what year that is, that old green one.
Anything else for anybody?
Usually he knows them, but he said he wasn't for sure on that one.
Jane, do you have any, wanna talk about the fire truck, anybody? Public safety.
Ever had to use it yet?
It's pretty cool. It is very nice.
I don't know how bad it has, yep.
I have not heard. He's gonna be here, I think, probably next meeting, because he's got all that stuff, he'll ring in, that we talked about last meeting, and he'll be ready. He thought that he'd be ready by then, with the house fat and all that.
Anything new on ambulance, do we know?
It looked nice. The old one, are they converting that one or?
Yeah.
I, uh, called Steensmann and they want to get the ambulance, move stuff taken off and have fire department stickers put on there over there.
Yeah. Well, did you guys do that, or you bring that to Grandville?
We'll bring it to, see if it's one.
Sandborne.
Oh, Sandborne.
He's got a big shopping center. Do you need a radio for us?
We can do, we can, we'll probably take one out of ninety-one or something, or the cheese truck.
The cheese truck, they got a cheese truck, yeah. Or the bread truck, does the bread truck have one yet?
Did you guys get all the stuff moved from the old ninety-one to the new truck?
Yep.
Good, so you're ready to roll, huh?
It's ready to go.
Good thing you didn't have anything in all this wind.
I drove by a corn fires Friday outside of Sioux City.
Uh, anything else from fire analysts, do you guys know with anyone? Library, mentioned it earlier, but Doris is retiring and not until later, but she's working on the board.
Looking for, seeking for their, looking for their new director and...
Is there a part-time person that wants to do it, or?
They're gonna keep it at part-time, she's part-time.
No, but I mean, the ladies are working.
No, nobody, it didn't sound like anybody was interested there.
Really, okay, so they handle all that, Terry Tesh?
They've got it already.
Linda.
Terry's a lot of them.
Oh, I remember.
She's the one that Doris, yeah, and they'll present them. And June, she said she was mine, haven't heard do it, but she, June's like...
Is that on the city's website, or could we put that on?
And then that Matthew Day.
No, no, I'm not being sorry.
Library's website.
Library's okay, it could be.
I think she's thinking like after Christmas. From what I'm hearing from, after Christmas, sometimes she's thinking about Dorothy.
So, we got time yet.
Oh, yeah, and she's, they're already, they're planning ahead, yeah.
Listen, that's nice.
Yeah, she wants it done right.
Good deal.
Yep.
Alright, uh, none of the committees expressed to need to talk or say anything officially, but I, we always have them on there if you have met or need to, or want to get something on the agenda for Monday seventh, be sure that you let us know. The vice council comments is also next.
Do we wanna then work on the, um, we talked about the codeifying, codifying, I don't know what that correct word is, but... To do all the ordinances, we need to get them updated.
We've, they're neat, cause I have a guide too, that I...
I call this Darren, from Northwest Clonan Zone. He will do it, he did it the last time, he said, um, in sixteen. And I think Brenda had called another guy, but he was twice as much fee, the guy from, is that, what was it? Yeah, is that Benoit that or something, I don't even know where he's from. But he said he will email all, we have to email all the updated city code changes and ordinances to him, and then he starts working on it. Um, he'll have three ring binders, he'll put it all in there.
You said American Legion?
American legal.
Legal. Is he right there?
No, I went through Northwest Clonan. Yeah, he had called here this summer, I think, didn't he? So, but this guy, Darren is like half of that per price.
I mean, we've had him do it before.
Yes, and he did it the last time.
So, do they redo the whole ordinance book then?
Um, what they'll do is they update everything that we've done since sixteen that, you know, probably isn't in the big books.
Okay.
But we have to get all of ours all up to date, so we can email it all to him, so he can start working on it. And, um, he highlights the changes, he's got different highlights, he does the code of Iowa, um, he will put something in red if it's not quite right, if he thinks there's a problem with how it's written, um...
Has he done any other ones besides that?
Well, I know he's done Primcar, I don't know who else. I think Sandborne had the other guy, I think Ryan told us of some of them, you know, but, um, I can't tell you who they all were. He has a commission that he works with and there's twenty-seven members, but he's got like three out of O'Brien County, and that's the Jim Zuton Harshu City manager in Sandborne, he's got Steensmann, John Steensmann, he's the supervisor, and Marjean Westerman as the at-large from Hartley. So, that's our three O'Brien County people. So, he was really informative with a lot of things, a lot of things that I didn't even have any idea that we cared about. But, sounds like he knows what his stuff is and I was pretty impressed with him. I think we've always been happy with him, with zoning and stuff, so...
And he's done it before.
Right, it sounds like he's been doing it a long time. So...
So, you'll get that paperwork with Scott, so he can...
I can do that, and I haven't done any more, I didn't know if we wanted to discuss any further or if we just wanna go, I think...
How much was he?
He's four grand. The other one was eight thousand something, eighty-one hundred, I think. So, I figured beans, he's done it before, he sounded like...
That's gross.
A good winter. I would like to have, you know, we want the updated ones ourselves too, I think the council should have a paper one, see, we don't need a big fancy book, but...
Well, I think maybe the committees need to like poly meet before, see if they need to update anything, like, there's a few outstanding things that Steve and I are working on that we just haven't came to a conclusion yet before we...
On, oh, you need to get some of your ordinances finished, okay, yep, that's a good idea.
You know, at one time we talked about the, the dog ordinance and...
Yeah, that's what we're still working.
Now, that's about a while, hasn't it?
It's a not a very easy... It's not an easy process to go through.
Yep, get it updated.
Get it updated.
Yep, nope, and then we'll have to go through and maybe someday I'm not real busy, I'll start going through some and see where you're at. Did you ever find the ordinance book at all, I know we talked about that.
Yeah, yeah, it's back there.
It is, okay. Cause you said the minutes are up to date.
Yeah, minutes are up to date.
So, we can start looking.
Did we, did we ever figure out when we're gonna do that class that we had to do with the state?
Oh.
No, not yet.
Do they contact us or we contact them?
Cause I can't get there too early, you know, it's not before, it's in there.
Don't you know that I'm, I'm...
There was a time period, I don't remember what.
Yeah, I think we're supposed to need to document it, I believe, to schedule that.
We said we can just, we have, we have an audit, we're gonna prove him to do it. I mean, even before that, but it's suggested, and then we don't let him know.
I was gonna say, I didn't wanna talk to the fire department, I was talking to a guy about that. On the next week, I wanna talk to the fire department, I was talking to a guy about that, he does pipeline work about that. So, many work there yesterday.
I think I did say something to him, cause I told him that's how it happens.
He says, they don't keep those up for everybody, maintenance and that, they can be very dangerous, cause you have to deal with explosive gases, you know, and... There's like SOPs and PDAs or whatever, so the fire department approaches it, they, they understand. You have a plan, that's, that's sort of good, good, cause he, this guy was telling me, he says, if the right people don't keep those up, you can be in trouble. Yes.
I think they have a...
Cause I think they've done one in that other dairy, cause somebody told me they got a full land halfway between the two dairies, and they got a thing, and they got one thing, one line across the... I just don't want the fire department showing up and getting their butt blown. Save the cows.
Save the cows.
Anything else to discuss, or can we call for adjournment?
I move the...
And a motion from Jay to adjourn.
I'll second.
And a second from Jean. Is there any other discussion that should not wait? Call for, oh, one favor with adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, say nay. Meeting adjourned at seven P M.
Holy lord.
Ew.
See, is this a record?
Still have to beat my hollow, though.
It is a record. Thirty-seven seconds, question period.